I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of March 7th. Please stand for the flag salute. And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if we could please have a moment of silence for Dan O'Connor, who was a former city council member. Please be seated. The roll call, please.
Councilmember Jelena Rosa.
Here.
Councilmember LaBelle.
Here.
Councilmember Schickling.
Here.
Mayor Proten Ponse.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here. Are there any announcements or written communications?
I have none.
No.
I just received a message that Ben Vialobos from IEX is trying to join the Zoom. Do we want to give him a phone number to call?
I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll reach out.
Okay, thank you. Department head reports.
Good evening, everyone. Orin Karsparvin, harbor master. Since my last report Tuesday, February 21st, patrol moored 60 boats for a total of 1,056 nights. Patrol did seven warnings or advisements of municipal code violations. Thirty-three public assists and 121 security patrols of the harbor facilities and surrounding waters. The float five refurbishment and repairs going as planned and on schedule despite the weather challenges that we've had the last couple of weeks. This week, we expect to see a lot of progress while the weather remains good, at least through Thursday. From my understanding, they started doing the epoxy coating to the float five. So, we're going to see a lot of forward movement on that. Mold transportation hub harbor eight report is as follows. For the period February 1st to February 28th, Harbor Eight wrote nine citations, warned or advised 87 persons of municipal code violations, provided English or Spanish public assistance to 309 individuals, responded to 11 medical incidents, and provided traffic control 252 times, which also includes locating or moving illegally parked vehicles. Here's a fun fact. During February, we had a total of 22 weather warnings, 13 of which were small craft advisories, eight gale warnings, and one extremely rare storm warning. This February had the third most small craft advisories and the most gale warnings since the harbor started keeping track in 1994.
Wow.
Wow, yeah. It's been crazy.
Yeah, busy.
Thank you. There's no questions? Any questions?
No, thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council, city staff, Michael Allegra, fire chief. In February, fire department ran 82 total calls, 28 of which were fire calls, related calls, and 54 EMS calls. As far as code enforcement, or on the fire side, a couple of us attended a battery class on lithium ion batteries. There's a lot of new information coming out almost monthly. Sent you guys an article of a big fire in New York that they were there that quick and that thing still did that much damage. So, it's very interesting. I could tell you about anecdotes and cathodes and the separators and everything we learned. That was like having Mr. Rockwell teach. It kind of brought back that Mr. Rockwell moment for me, being in the class. The guy was amazing. He's going to come work with us to possibly touch up on our codes so we could protect ourselves, the community, with all these batteries coming out.
Yeah, nice.
So, that's coming up. And then, as far as code goes, in the month of February, they wrote 177 citations. That doesn't include, they give a lot of warnings. They help myself and the building inspector. They go out weekends, not after hours, but weekends mostly, Sundays, tell people stop working. They're out early to catch the people that are starting work before eight. They make a couple rounds, a couple days a week, and catch those folks as well. They've been helping the vehicle clerk run stickers, so they're not out as much. But they're helping with that. She's been busy. They've did, still doing all their animal stuff. They'll leave to pick up dead deers, dead things like they used to, like they still do. They're going to start issuing some letters of abatement. So, where trees are overhanging in the street, for us, it hits our antennas, damages those. So, they're work, they're almost done with the list to send it out throughout the whole town of people for that. And they did a couple of warnings to, like the freight service people. The UPS just does some pre-summer, no driving on Front Street. There's going to be certain hours. Bob's going to present you guys some new loading zone areas, so maybe we could try and clean that up. But we're just kind of getting the word out now. No, you can load and unload, but don't leave your vehicle there for longer than it has to be. And that's it.
Just with regard to the weed abatement, whatever, there's also a lot of, there's some blocking the sidewalks because their shrubs grow out so much, and so hopefully they'll kind of...
That's on the list.
Yeah, okay, great. There's some pretty things out there, but you have to walk into the street intentionally to avoid them. Okay.
For the fire calls, how many of those were related, or do you have an idea of how many of those are related to standalone heaters or heating units in homes that needed to be repaired? Have you had, is it because of that, or is it other things that were causing fire calls this year?
General fire alarm, that could include anything from, anything non-medical.
Okay.
So, it could be, let's see, someone calls in an odor of smoke, or they see smoke. Could be a fire alarm. Could be just a public service helping somebody up in our stair chair up to their stairs. It's a whole variety. But on heater ones, I could, off the top of my head, one or less, maybe no more than five. Especially when everyone was kicking them on, we were getting those calls. Couple of overheated, and we got called early on and just shut the power and had somebody secure it, fix it after we left.
Thank you.
I had a question over the e-bike batteries. Once they come, is that some information that we can maybe share with the school so they can share with the parents?
Yeah, once we get, we want to make a little brochure. They just, they have to be UL certified with the proper charging equipment. If you buy a knockoff battery for your bike or a knockoff charger, and that's where the problems are starting.
Wow.
That's definitely, I think, something we should share, because I know of a couple stories where they are replacing the battery, not really knowing which one to purchase. So, maybe that could help.
No, we'll include that.
Thank you.
And the old lithium batteries go to the, go to Cap when he's out there with all the electronics and stuff?
Yeah, they do not go in the trash.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob's on a well-deserved vacation. The man never takes a break, as you guys know. So, I'd step up to see if you guys had any questions. You've obviously received my update, public works update from last Friday. I don't know if you had any questions about that or anything ongoing. Anybody have anything? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I just thought of one. Sorry, Jamie. That saltwater leak that was right down from 206 East Swidley, I see that they pulled up the bricks and all that kind of stuff, so they're repairing that, and it's going to be parkable again?
As you saw firsthand, it was quite an interruption over there. So, yeah, they got to remove all those pavers and refill everything and put them back in place. So, hopefully by the end of this week, it might carry in a little bit of next week, and then we can...
But it will be weight-bearing, and it'll be fine to park on there and all that stuff again?
Absolutely.
Okay, groovy, thank you.
Everybody have their parking back up there. All right, thanks.
All right, thanks.
Good evening. Since the last time there was a council meeting, we had 87 calls for service. Twenty-two of those were calls from the public, and 65 of those were observations made by the deputies themselves. We're currently in the process of renovating the casitas that we use here on, with the city's casitas. Last week, I had the great pleasure of moving them out, so that was a lot of fun. And, but they should be starting up, hopefully tomorrow, at the latest, on Thursday. And we anticipate it being about six weeks.
Wow.
The deputies were moved over, actually, there's two civilian employees, two deputies, and they rented a house at Fairview Terrace. So, it'll be up there for the six weeks. Hopefully, it's only six weeks. We just got back our safe boat. It was being repaired, so that's perfectly up and running now. We have both our boats ready to go. And we're working still on our data for the station. We have an extremely slow connection here, and currently, they have three dishes working together, but they have to have five total dishes in order for the system to work properly. So, it's amazing how long it takes. Since I got here, we've been trying to get it. So, hopefully, in the next two, three months, we'll have, you know, real genuine ability to research online, so.
Yeah, oh, good.
Any questions?
Appreciate your optimism.
That's right.
I appreciate your optimism.
I was told January 1st, and I'm like, okay. County time, it's, you know, more like June, and now I'm hoping June's even...
We can relate.
Crossing my fingers for you. I hope it is that short. I was just going to ask, we have some people asking about, as it starts warming up and there's more people moving about Front Street, the possibility of limiting down the number of vehicles parked on Front Street and increasing the number of officers walking Front Street and actively moving. I know you guys are doing that more and more, but just, there was a question about it this week from a couple of different people, different business owners on Front Street. So, they were just asking if that was a possibility to see.
Sure, yeah. And I've also been approached about the vehicles parked on Front Street.
Me too.
Some people feel that it's a waste, which I kind of agree with, but it just, it just, it just seems like it, it doesn't do anything. It's just vehicles parked there.
Well, our assaults have gone down quite a bit since we started doing that. The number of assaults from Marlin Bar, as well as...
See, I can see it at night when people are coming out of the bar.
Yeah.
I don't see it during the day. That's, to me, it just hinders people walking on the street.
I can see your point. We can talk about it more in private, if you like. I just kind of wanted to go over my point of view a little more than...
That'd be great.
In this forum.
Yeah, that's great. I appreciate that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor, council members, good evening. During the heavy windstorms this past weekend, a branch from an eucalyptus tree fell from the top of Country Club Drive and smashed the fence at Avalon Kids Park near the playground. Luckily, no one was hurt. However, to make sure to lower the risk, we have removed the tree altogether. The tree was already compromised with heavy erosion that was exposing its roots, and it was splitting even more due to the weather. So, we didn't want to risk at all of that being ripped down. So, if anybody's asking where that eucalyptus tree went...
Your mother.
That's, that's what's happened. The Saturday, March 11th, Spectrum Sports with Catalina Conservancy is putting on the annual marathon again. It starts at Two Harbors and ends on Sumner. There will be a little impact due to the 5K starting at 8:15 a.m. and the 10K starting at 8:30 a.m. and the kids' race at 9 a.m. And those races typically end by 10:00, so there will be at least a little traffic, foot traffic during that time. There are no road closures, but we would, we would like to warn the public to keep their eyes out for runners. And the marathoners kind of come in sporadically throughout the day. This event traditionally brings in about 800 participants throughout all the races, and they usually average about two to three people additional coming with them. So, it's a great off-season event for the community and for the businesses. So, it's great if we can have people go down there and make sure they cheer on those accomplished runners as they're coming in. 26 miles is tough to do, I can only imagine. We are receiving bids now for fireworks and barges, and we'll be bringing them next city council on March 21st, so the council can choose what is the best fit for our needs for the Fourth of July. Also, last but not least, with the return of Marissa in my office, we have been able to have one person focus completely on detailing our portion of the website. It's been a little sporadic, so I'm having her back. I've been able to get her to focus on that. We can now do all facility rentals, special event permitting, street performance permitting, paddleboard, kayak storage, signups, you can sign up and pay for activities all online, things that we're hoping to do in the future. We'll be able to sign up for, to participate in events such as our primetime events or festivals or whatever else of type of event or festivity we can think of. You can start signing up online instead of having to come into city hall. As you see what we, how we've been able to reduce foot traffic during the vehicle permitting season due to that, so it's been, it's made it very manageable, and we're hoping to do that on our side as well. We are excited about these possibilities, the efficiency, and we encourage everyone to create a profile. Go to cityofavalon.com, choose the Community Service and Recreation Department, press online registration system today, and sign up. We greatly appreciate it, and I believe it will make everybody's life simple. Can we help? Have any questions?
No, thank you.
No? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
City manager report?
Thank you, mayor, council. Good evening. A few things tonight. I just want to let council know that very recently, over the last several days, we've had conversations that have gone pretty rapidly with Congressman Robert Garcia's office. He does want to come over, and the date that they have that's most available is March 20th. So, that's quickly coming up. We are, hopefully, by end of today, or end of day tomorrow, we'll have exact time on that date of when he'll be able to come over and make arrangements and get that out to council. So, it's Monday, March 20th, and we certainly appreciate his time, and we're not going to, we're not going to turn it down. So, if he's able to come, we'll react accordingly, because as you know, we have Assemblyman Lowenthal this Friday, and other than the weather, everything else is cooperating, and we're all, we're on schedule for this, this week. As you heard from Orin, we have had a number of weather events, as we all know, this year. And, and I think we all see the work that the Public Works Department does out there. They were out there last week. We had a rockslide that started right about 5:00 o'clock after everybody was home. Everybody came back around across from the casino. They reacted. They, they worked. They did a great job. But I think we, it's very important to point out that the preparation work for all these storms that the Harbor Patrol Department does way before these storms come. They look at them, they see what's coming, they make all their preparations, do all that work, and it's extremely important, because the fact that they do that puts them out of harm's way, reduces, significantly reduces the risk of property damage to any of our boaters out there and to city facilities. And I think it's just, you know, the fact that we haven't had any significant damage out there is not luck. I mean, it's really what they do, the fact that Orin and his staff stay so far on top of this and reacts well before, it puts them in a position that when the storm hits, they're not out there risking life and limb, and we don't want to do that. So, I just want to give them a shout out and appreciate what they do. The, and I just want to finally just remind council that the next meeting on March 21st will be a joint meeting with Planning Commission. Planning Commission will be here that night. The idea at this point is that council will hold their council meeting. Planning Commission will be here, so there can be a joint discussion regarding short-term rentals. And then, once you are done with your business, Planning Commission will take the dice and do their business that same night. So, I think it's a good opportunity for both you and Planning Commission to have a dialogue and give staff and I direction on maybe what changes, if any, you want us to look into with the short-term rentals that we have here on the island. We'll get you some information beforehand, a map showing where, two things mainly, where all the short-term rentals are located, and then we're also going to indicate those that are active. There are a number, for example, we might have 350 that have the ability to do it, but only 200 and something that actually rent. I think those two numbers are important to us, because there's some that are just holding that out and have the CUP for future need or resale ability. So, coming out of that, then, we'll be asking both you and Planning Commission, give us some direction on maybe what you'd like to see us do, and hopefully, there'll be some, some good dialogue coming out of that.
Would it be possible to also put on that map, indicate how many of them are owned? One owner has multiple?
We'll try to track down, it might not be on the map, but we'll try to track down a list of who has multiples.
And the number of them, like five or two, or, okay.
Right.
That would be, I would be curious about that.
Okay. And if there's anything else between now and then that comes up, shoot me an email. Let me know. We'll try to get that information to you beforehand, so you can have that discussion.
It would also be curious, but this is a lot of work for finance, so I almost don't want to say it. I guess we know who, the people that give us huge amounts of money versus those people that give us $120 a year. There's some breakdown of that. Because to me, there's always been a thing, holding on to something and only giving us 120 bucks. Here he is. Sorry, Matt.
Not a problem. I figured you'd ask, and there will be that analysis in the, in the presentation.
Excellent. Okay, thank you very much. Okay.
Anything else?
From you? No.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Does Melissa have anything to say for...
I am not sure if she is online yet. I'm trying to...
Okay, and Melanie?
She is. Melissa is on, does she have anything to report, Matt? Well, Melanie, Melissa is from Scott's office. Melanie is from the Housing Authority, in case there's any questions. So, do you, do you know Melissa has been able to call in?
I believe so.
Okay. If not, we'll circle back if she, if she does.
Okay. All right, council member reports.
I'll go first, because I don't have much. Just that the two things that I wanted to talk about were brought up. One with fire chief in regards to code and deliveries on, people trying to make deliveries. And then, the other was the vehicles on Front Street. So, I'm good.
Did you want to give a pitch for the church?
And then, St. Patrick's Day dinner at St. Catherine's on St. Patrick's Day. And for those practicing Catholics, we have dispensation to have meat. So, you can have corned beef or cabbage or chili bear dish. And they're doing two settings, seating's one at 5:00 and one at 7:00. And it's something that we haven't done in years, so.
The church hasn't done it, but others of us have done it.
Well, yeah, the church has.
Yes, yes. So, I'm back in the church's hands. You got a lot of people there. Okay.
Oh, I can go next. I had to mention before, I had the nominating committee, and it was supposed to be on the island, but got canceled because of weather. But we did do it over Zoom, so we were able to still present our recommended candidates for the upcoming year. I also attended a broadband meeting, February 27th. It was presented by Michael Baker International. They're a broadband connectivity platform that helps cities plan, map, and implement FCC standards. I know Lisa's going to watch that soon, and then I made sure to share the site with her, because it's kind of Chinese to me. I needed help. I definitely need some more help on that one. And then, there is also a 2024 federal community project funding virtual briefing tomorrow, March 8th, at 1:30, and I made sure to share that information as well with Dave and Audra. We do have, I want to remind you guys, that Town Hall over Dallas's treatment tomorrow at 5:30 at Toyon Grove. And, oh, and I turned in my 700 form.
Yay.
So, that is out of the way.
You still had a lot of time. Okay, I'll assume.
Sure. I don't have much, but, and I don't know if this is the right form to ask this question, but I thought of it after Orin was talking. Would it be, because I watch KTLA, KTLA news all the time, and, you know, they're the local news channel and all this kind of stuff, and they're always like, the high wind warnings in the San Bernardino Mountains and all this kind of stuff, and then you see the island down here in purple. And it's like, ah. Would it behoove us in the city to reach out to KTLA and say, you know, when you have those high wind things, you should maybe mention if you're going on vacation to Catalina, call the Catalina Express and see if the boats are ready? Because what happens to, I mean, we get the choney alerts.
Yeah.
We're up on that, but how do other people get notified?
People are now signed up for both text and email when they book with Catalina Express. And generally, most people now use a cell phone number to book with the flyer. So, they're getting a notification usually from the business.
Oh, okay.
Flyers usually have been reaching out $24 to $40 ahead of time. The Express will usually reach out as soon as they make the call in the morning and message them to let them know, so they don't have to have a lot of people calling in. But...
It'd be kind of free advertising, too.
Yeah.
If you're going to Catalina.
It'd be nice if we weren't covered by their lake. That would be cool, in a storm situation, to have that heads up. But we luckily also have, you know, choney alert, too.
All right.
Yeah, they should mention us more, and I would like that, too.
So, would there be any objection if I kind of reached out to KTLA just to say, hey, we're here and it does affect us?
Is that something that the chamber could do for us as well?
Because they're really good at putting information in.
Yeah, either way.
All right, cool. Yeah, and then I'm going on vacation next week, but it's perfect, because I get to meet with Lowenthal, and then I'll be back in time to meet with Garcia, so.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, I'm excited about that, and I'm excited about being warm for a minute.
So excited to be warm. We had a broadband call with representatives from State Senator Lena Gonzalez's office in the last couple of weeks with the connectivity group. There's some concern regarding what's on the FCC maps still from multiple entities, and I may have more to come on that in the future. We'll see what happens. Got a couple of different emails from Michael Baker International. I didn't, I couldn't recall if we had had an account with them at some point or had done a project with them, but I can't also tell if it's just because it's Matt Baker's last name and Michael's a common name of a lot of the different entities that we work with. Do you guys remember at all if we've had a contract with them?
With Michael Baker.
Right?
We have, yes.
Okay. So, I don't know if it makes sense, they were, the discussion they were talking about specifically was modifying, being the government entity that modifies the fabric of, what they call the fabric, which is the map for the actual broadband locations. So, saying if there's coverage, how many units there are that require coverage, how many people there are accessing coverage at a certain location. And then, also making positive affirmation or a negative complaint regarding if the internet service provided matches what is being offered in the area. I think that's the area where more of us have issues. There's one provider on there that says they can offer 100 by 100, and they're not even offering anything on the island except for private entities down the coast. So, there's some links that we've shared previously. I know Jim has shared them. Jim Lutjehan has shared them. I've shared them, but I'll reshare them again to go on there and point out where things look wrong or incorrect. Any member of the public can do it. This specific course was regarding hiring them as a consultant to be able to do it on behalf of a local government. Local government has greater access to do it. So, again, I don't know that we want to go there. I don't know that the price makes sense for what we're getting for it, but also, I think the number of people voicing their concern individually is appropriate. We'll look into whether or not, moving forward with that, could be a thing we want to bring to council. I was unable to attend the COG meeting, because the boats got canceled, and they forgot to make a decision last month when they, the decision was made not to move forward with online meetings. And so, because of that, I was unable to attend remotely. They didn't have it noticed as that. So, they're going to talk about that for next time, but hopefully, knock on wood, we won't have any more cancellations this year. Just wanted to wish everyone a happy Women's, International Women's Day tomorrow. Thanks for being amazing women, and to all the women working at City Hall, and to all the women in this community that keep it literally running all the time. I think we're quite fortunate in that we get to see strong women leadership all the time, and it's something that we grew up with, and it's something that we're fortunate to see. So, excited to meet with Assemblymember Lowenthal on Friday, and then we'll also be attending Congressman Lowenthal's retirement celebration over town on Sunday. And then, yeah, excited to welcome Congressman Robert Garcia as well. That'll be great.
Okay. As you know, we're going to start signing up for DMV on the 20th of March, and there are, the booklets are in Spanish, and Rosio was going to order some for the English version, because a number of us have been called that we have to take the written test. I tried to take it online today. I flunked one test, and I passed the other. So, the book might be helpful. So the book might be helpful. Anyway, the city selection committee, there were two different ones. One was for the LA County Affordable Housing Group, and, and Victor Sanchez from Bellflower was elected for that one. And then Jose Luis Solachi from Linwood was put on the AQMD board, and I was involved in those elections. And got to know them over the phone, but like, they can see my candidates won on that one, and they won by a lot. So they were, they were pretty popular, and they really did a lot of work. And we had a little SCAG meeting, which they always talk about, last miles traveled, and all of, all of the big stuff that really doesn't affect us very much. But, but I was on the call for two hours. And had a meeting with Edison. I don't know how often we usually have those, but, well, our city manager was at the chamber meeting. I was on board. But we got a call today, the reservoir is at 828 acre feet, which is just, and it's going to keep on going. They just gave us kind of the same things that we always talk about. They were putting out a request for new technologies, an RFO, and they got a lot of healthy responses for that. I don't, I think you said fourteen or fifteen people came. They took them around. They took them to Middle Ranch to look at renewable energy kinds of things. They'll keep the us in mind, because there might be something that maybe Edison's not interested in, but might be beneficial to just the city. So that was kind of interesting. And they just talked about the timelines for, for the new wells, I guess, the generators, the diesel generators have been received in Westminster, but there's other AQMD stuff they have to do. So it's kind of like the city, even with everything, it still takes a heck of a lot of time to get things installed. And they're looking at, so the saltwater well getting put in, and then also a half a million gallon tank where the Baker tanks are. And then the Wrigley Reservoir would be a project further down the line. So, anyway, it is interesting. Okay. That's all I have. So, oral communication, this is an opportunity for people in the community to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken. And while Paul is coming up, do we have any?
I have no communications now.
All right, great.
Real quick, I'm sorry, Paul. On the Edison conversation, I know when we first got elected, we did a Zoom meeting with Ron, and he went over everything with us, you know, with the facilities. But is there any way now that, you know, COVID's kind of behind us, that we could do like an onsite tour of the facilities? Would that be something we could plan?
Absolutely.
Selena had actually offered, I think, to set that up.
Right.
She did mention, I just want to make sure, you know, put it on paper that we can go.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul.
Just about the DMV thing, you came to the library, Mayor Marshall, looking for DMV books, which we didn't have. We still don't have them, but the library website does have a link to the PDF of the, of the book, if you need it in English.
Okay, thank you.
I also wanted to just go over what we have coming up on March. We have a lot of stuff this month. It's going to be a really nice month. Coming up this Friday, we have an anime class. He's a former artist animator for The Simpsons. I don't know how many episodes he drew, but he's, that's his credit. He's going to teach kids, or anybody, please come, how to draw and create an anime character. I think this one's going to be really fun. I haven't been able to figure out how to promote it, because it's so soon. But I'm hoping we get a good audience for that, because I think this one's going to be really good.
I bet a lot of high school kids would like that, because at the art festival, you know, we have the, the kids' art. We do get, we've gotten a lot more anime over the years.
Anime is so popular.
Right, right.
So, yeah, this is a guy who, that's his area. Rescheduled from last month, she had to cancel in the storm, is the Chinese calligraphy drawing class. That's going to be on the 15th. That's going to be just gorgeous. She's a very, I've had her on the island, Ms. Lamb, before. She does beautiful calligraphy and art. Coming up then on the 22nd, Wacko the Magician. Sorry. I've been waiting a month to do that. Is coming on the 22nd. He's so funny. He was here last 2019. He had everybody in stitches. I'm so excited to have him back. These three programs are sponsored by our Friends of Avalon Library. Thank you very much. Also, I'm now doing a Games Day every Wednesday. We had a go-for-it last Wednesday at four during the storm. It was kind of nice. We had a bunch of kids playing games. We had some seniors playing games. Nobody fought with each other. It was really, really, really nice.
And Risk game is still going on, right?
The game, some of them are, you have Monopoly, they're still playing Monopoly over there. Tuesday, March 14th and the 28th, Chuck Liddell is coming to the library to talk history. He does 20 minutes talking, like, on a specific bit of history, and then he does trivia, which is really funny, and everybody's having a great time. We've timed it at two o'clock, so some of the people are from the cruise ship, but some of them are sort of our old timers who just like hanging out and chewing, chewing the gum and talking about, you know, you remember that old thing over there. A couple of crafts I'm doing, going to have a clay workshop on the 21st. That's for teens. They sent me big buckets of clay. We'll see how that works. Think Like a Zoologist for Women's History Month. That's coming up very shortly. Basically, that's going to draw dinosaurs. It's an excuse to draw dinosaurs. Coming up at the end of the month, this month's book club is Emma Donoghue's Haven. It's a sort of thriller drama about a group of monks in the sixth century who moved to a remote island to create a monastery and what happens to them. I have books at the library. Also Storytime every Saturday at 11:00, Smartypants Storytime, School Readiness Storytime, Saturday at 11:00. So thank you very much for supporting your local library.
Lots of good stuff. Okay, if there's no other, we have a presentation by our finance director, Matthew Baker. He's wearing both hats today. Paul, do you have extra flyers of those? Can, can, can we have them up here? Thank you. Okay, great.
I also saw them on the bulletin board in the arcade.
Yes. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. Presenting tonight, the audited financial results for fiscal year 2021, 2022. So that's where the year ended, June 30th of '22. The audited report will be in the next Agenda Packet. I just wanted to present it tonight, rather than at the, the joint council meeting. So it was a bit of a race against the clock to get it to you, but you will have a copy of the report in the next Agenda Packet, which will be on the consent calendar then. But I wanted to share the results, since we do have the report finalized. Again, the annual comprehensive financial report is for the fiscal year ended June 30th of '22. The report consists of management's representations concerning the finances of the city. Management's responsible for both the accuracy of the data and the completeness and fairness of its presentation. The report was prepared in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles, referred to often as GAAP. And then it was also audited in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. And Dave Sparr, our external auditors, issued an unmodified opinion, which means that it's their opinion the city's financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with GAAP. So just kind of how to read the, the financials when you get it. There's really three sections in the, the ACFA, the comprehensive financial reports. The first section's introductory section. There's a letter of transmittal drafted by myself with Dave that kind of provides an overview of the city government as a whole. It includes an org chart, as well as a list of elected and appointed officials. The next section's kind of the meat of the, the report, is the financial section. It begins with the independent auditor's report. And that's where they explain the basis for their unmodified opinion. There's a management discussion and analysis section, which follows the report, and the majority of my presentation really summarizes the information that's included in the MDNA. And that's really taking the financial results and kind of reporting them out in more of a narrative format to help the reader kind of understand what the numbers actually mean. Then there's the actual basic financial statements, and there's three kind of categories within that. The government-wide financial statements, the fund financial statements, and then the notes to the basic financial statements, as well as required supplementary information and other information. And lastly, at the end of the audited financials, so when you get the document, there's a statistical section. This section's unaudited, but what it does is it provides kind of a, a 10-year look back at, you know, where the, the city was financially 10 years ago to today. That way you can kind of draw some conclusions as far as, you know, what condition we're in relative to where we were five or 10 years ago. So the, the first section's going to touch on the government-wide financial statements, which the goal of those is really to report on the city as a whole. The, the first financial statement within that is a statement of net position. And that's really the, the difference between all of the city's assets minus all the city's liabilities. The, the difference between those two figures is reported as the net position. And then over time, any increase or decrease in net position could be used as a useful indicator of whether the city's financial position is improving or deteriorating. The next statement within the government-wide is the statement of activities. And that statement, what that does is it shows how the net position increased or decreased over the year. In, in both statements, the information's separated between government activities and business-type activities. Again, government activities are ones that are principally supported through taxes and other intergovernor, intergovernmental revenues. And the business-type activities, and those are activities that are intended to be covered, or at least a significant portion of the cost being covered by the users of those activities. So a, a good example would be the harbor. The users of the harbor are how the harbor pays for its operating costs. So this right here, and it's small to read, but kind of the key takeaway from this slide is that our city's net position increased by 6.6 million, or 23%. The increase was comparable in both the governmental activities and business-type activities. And if you're comparing this year to last year, really where the, the significant difference is, is in current and restricted assets. And what essentially that means is that the, in the past year, we had revenues come in that we didn't spend or encumber on anything. And so that led to increased cash, improving our net position. So the next statement is the statement of activities. The statement of activities, it shows that the, the previous slide shows the net position increased by 6.6 million. How it increased by 6.6 million is our tax revenues increased considerably in governmental activities. So there's a line item, TOT, most notably, went from 6 million in last fiscal year to 8.7 million in fiscal year '22. So there's 2.7 million increase. And essentially, the, the increased tax revenues weren't all spent, and so that's how we had an increase in the, the net position. Similar with business-type activities, except for tax revenues, it was charges for services. Some of that was from increased harbor activity, as well as the rate increases for sewer, saltwater, and solid waste, a part of the, the rate study that was adopted in '21. Those rate increases went into effect in fiscal year '22. And so that's why we see an increase in charges for services in the program revenues there. So again, with the governmental activities, those are activities that are principally supported by tax revenues. So if we were to look at fire and ambulance, the, the total cost or expenses in, for the fire department were 2.895 million. But the fire department does generate some revenue in that ambulance fees, and there's a few other small fees where, where the fire department generates revenue, and so that far right column is the net cost after considering those fees. So the, the net cost of the fire department is at 2.4 million. So again, governmental activities typically don't pay for themselves. They're supported with tax revenues. But the goal of the business-type activities would be that the users of those activities pay for the service. And so what the, the chart below shows is that the harbor had operating revenues in excess of its expenses of 2.1 million. So it's kind of flip-thought process. The, the negative numbers there is actually a good thing. It means the revenues were higher than the expenses for both the harbor, the sewer, and the saltwater. The solid waste and the Avalon Transit had operating losses, so their expenses are greater than the revenues for those funds. It's not really unexpected. When we did the rate study, we phased in the increase required for the solid waste rate, so it wouldn't all be felt in the first year, but kind of spread over several years. And so that's part of the reason why we see the operating loss in fiscal year '22 for solid waste. Similarly, with Avalon Transit, we typically subsidize our transit activities. While they do generate some fare box revenue, the costs to running the transit exceeds the, the monies we get for transit. So you can see we had an operating loss in transit of 156,000 in the last fiscal year. So kind of, that was the government-wide financial statements. The next category within the audited financials are the fund financials. And these really are trying to focus in on kind of the most significant funds for the city. So with the governmental funds, when you're looking at the fund financial statement, it really provides a short-term view of how much money we have available to spend at the end of the year. It's kind of what the, the fund financials tell you for governmental funds. For the proprietary, proprietary funds, those are enterprise funds. Those are the business-type activities. Really, the reporting for those is the same as in the government-wide financial statements. The only difference is in the fund financials, you'll see harbor, sewer, saltwater broken out separately, whereas in the government-wide, those are all combined as the business-type activities. And then lastly, we do have a fiduciary fund, and that's our successor agency. I'm not really going to spend a lot of time talking about it, but we do have a fund financial statement in there for, for it as well. So again, with the, the governmental fund or the general fund, there's classifications of the fund balance. And the fund balance is really the money that's available in the short term to, to spend in the general fund. The categories are non-spendable, and so these would be things like inventory, something that can readily be converted to cash. Restricted, this is where there's an externally imposed constraint. So for example, the gas tax. Any unspent gas tax is recorded as a restricted fund balance, because that money has to be spent on street maintenance-type activities. The last three are all considered collectively unrestricted funds, and that's because the only restrictions imposed on those are ones potentially imposed by council. So a committed fund balance would be if council set aside money specifically for, say, a capital reserve. Assigned is if we've, say, encumbered the funds for a project where we have a contract to spend those monies, but at the year-end, we haven't spent the monies. And then unassigned, which is where most of our unrestricted fund balance falls into in the general fund, is, and that's monies at the end of the year that's available for general government purposes. So the next slide here is a breakdown of the fund balances as of June 30th, '22. You can see we had some prepaid expenses in the general fund, and so those, that would be an example of a non-spendable fund balance. And then in the general funds, that's the, the column furthest to the left of the three. You can see we have a restricted fund balance of 326,000, and that's related to the hospital, primarily Measure H collections, as well as any hospital tax pass-through that wasn't passed through as of the, the year-end. And then lastly, you can see that unassigned fund balance in the general fund is 12.25 million, and the total fund balance is 12.588. When I presented back in November, I reported a fund balance in the general fund of 12.564. So you can see really not a whole lot has changed from what, when we presented the unaudited to the audited financials. And that, that is to be expected, because by then, we're pretty far along in the, in the process. The other funds are restricted funds, so the capital projects includes development impact fees, as well as a trust fund. We have set aside for fire equipment. Balance is included in there. The street project is that gas tax fund that I mentioned before. And then the 5.7 million is monies we have for low and moderate housing. That's restricted for those purposes. So government-wide, in the, the governmental funds, we have a fund balance of 18.5 million. Again, this next slide then shows how we were able to increase our fund balance. Again, this next slide then shows how we were able to increase our fund balance. So last year, we had an unassigned fund balance in the general fund of 6.7 million. And we were able to increase that to the 12.25 million. And how we were able to do that, it really is, again, revenues far exceeded their historical levels. And while expenditures did increase, they didn't increase to the level that we saw increases in revenues. So going down, you can see our tax revenues, which includes TOT increased by 35%, or 3.6 million. Of that 3.6 million, 2.7 was TOT. So really, TOT was the driving factor there. The other one that really stands out is in the intergovernmental revenues. Those increased by 1.28 million. That included the ARPA state and local fiscal recovery funds that the city received. We received and recognized 880,000 in ARPA revenue in fiscal year '22. And so that's really what accounts for a lot of that increase in the intergovernmental category. So you can see on the expenditure side, most groupings did have an increase from fiscal year '21. I think it's important to point out, though, in fiscal year '21, we still had a number of COVID restrictions in place, including for a portion of the year, furloughs on city staff. And so the double-digit increase really isn't all that unexpected. Just wanted to call out the why planning is so much higher. So you can see planning increased year-over-year by 35.4%. A lot of that has to do with grant-funded activities. So we had a number of grant-funded reports that came out of planning in fiscal year '22. And so that's really driving the increase in planning. Similarly, in general government, that's where our pass-through revenues come out of. So we saw a considerable increase in our TOT revenues. As a result, we saw a considerable increase in our chamber allocation, similar with the hospital sales tax revenues. That's 100% pass-through. So any increase in those hospital sales tax revenues, also, we had a corresponding increase in expenditures. And so that's why those two categories had significant or larger increases in expenses relative to the others, whereas most of them were in kind of the 10% to 15% increase. So if you look at our revenues and the increases we saw there and looked at the expenses and the increases there, but albeit not at the same level as revenues, that's how we were able to have excess revenues over expenditures of 5.9 million, which drove that increase in unassigned fund balance from the previous slide. This next slide is a breakdown by business-type activities. So as you, as mentioned before, harbor, sewer, and saltwater operating revenues exceeded their operating expenses. Solid waste and transit had operating losses. One other thing I did want to point out is in the solid waste, we also had investment losses on our trust account. Again, we do have a trust account set aside for our landfill closure and post-closure costs. But those, we did have losses in that trust account. And so those would either need to be covered by gains in future years or potentially increased contributions. So it's just something to point out and keep an eye on. But as you can see, in the three funds, we did see an increase in the net position for harbor, sewer, and saltwater. And really, those excess funds are important because that's what gives us the monies available to fund new capital investment. And so it's certainly positive that those three funds posted strong years. But there is also some deferred capital plans, particularly in the harbor, where those monies will be spent in future years. Not going to go through all the notes to the financial statements, but the notes do provide additional context to a lot of the information that's in the financials themselves. There's information on significant policies, on capital assets, long-term liabilities. So there is more context to the financial statements. So definitely encouraged to take a look at those. A couple that I was just going to call out is our capital assets. You can see our capital assets, total capital assets for both business-type and governmental decreased over the year. And really, what that means is that our depreciation was greater than our investment in new capital assets. Again, I expect that to change in future years, but there are some kind of deferred capital activity in fiscal year '22, which did improve our cash balance. But there was a decrease in our overall capital assets for fiscal year '22. Similarly, for debt administration. So this is a breakdown of all our debt and non-current liabilities at year-end. The first line is compensated absences. And so that's accruals for, that are on the books for employees with vacation or comp time or sick time. Claims payable, we didn't have a lot of liability on the books for claims payable. The capital lease liability is Joe Machado Field. So you can see at fiscal year '22, year-end, we had 224,000 outstanding related to Joe Machado. We did pay off our State Department of Boating and Waterways. So next year, you won't see that line out on there. But in fiscal year '21, we had 54,000, and that was paid off in fiscal year '22. Net OPEB liability didn't change a whole lot. Net pension liability did decrease considerably, but a lot of that decrease had to do with strong investment returns from fiscal year '21. Fiscal year '22, so there's a lag in the investment returns kind of going into the actuarial reports, going into the financial statements. Fiscal year '22, CalPERS did not report investment gains. They actually had investment losses. So I think a lot of the decrease in liability and net pension that you're seeing in '22, that's going to go away in the next financial report. So just kind of with that one, you got to kind of take it with the context, knowing there's a year lag in the investment returns impact. So again, after the notes to the financials, there is some additional information, required supplementary information and other information. Most of it relates to additional information on our pension funding, as well as our OPEB contributions and our OPEB liability. They also do have budget-to-actual comparisons for all the governmental funds. That can be found in the required supplementary information. We came in under budget. A lot of that had to do with revenues exceeding where we thought, but really, it was decreased capital activity relative to the budget. Our other expenditures were in line or under budget, but really where the significant variances from the budget were was in planned capital versus actual capital spend in fiscal year '22. So when you do get the audited financial, there's some good information there. The other information section just provides additional fund-level detail for governmental funds that are grouped as non-major. So for example, the Development Impact Fee Fund, CDBG Fund, the Gas Tax Street Administration Fund. A lot of these smaller funds are combined in the fund financial statements as non-major funds. In the other information, they break these out at the individual fund level. So lastly, is the statistical section. I only concluded a few of them, but it's also really, I think, a helpful area to look at. So you can kind of see, okay, where we're at today, but also where the city's been over the last 10 years. And so this slide here is a breakdown of our net position for both governmental and business-type activities over 10 years. And so you can see, we're kind of on an upward swing from fiscal year '13 to fiscal year '16, where we peaked as far as net position, government-wide. And then from fiscal year '17, kind of down to '21, you can see a slow kind of decrease in our net position. And then this year, in fiscal year '22, there is a considerable jump in our overall net position. And if you look at fund balance or unassigned fund balance for governmental funds, it kind of tells you a similar story to the net position. You can see that fiscal year '16, we peaked as far as our unassigned fund balance and fund balance in governmental funds with a kind of a decrease over the next several years. And again, we kind of turned that around in '21, and then a considerable increase in '22. If you look back over the last 12 years, we've never had an unassigned fund balance even over 10 million. And we have 12 million we're reporting this year. Fiscal year '16, again, that year that I mentioned was the previous peak. We had an unassigned fund balance of 7.3 million. And again, really what drove all this? This is a breakdown of revenues, tax revenues by source over the last 10 years. And you can really see where the growth has been is in our transient occupancy tax. And really, a lot of that has been experienced in the last two years, and this year in particular. We had TOT revenues of 8.7 million compared to 6 million in the prior year. And in the pre-COVID fiscal year '19, of 5.396 million. So really, that's what's been driving our increase in our unassigned fund balance and our increase in our net position is really strong revenues that we haven't been spending. So that's been building our available funds for future spending. There's more information in the statistical section than just those three. I just tried to keep this as short as possible. But like I said, in the next agenda report, there will be the audited financials. And I plan on posting them on the website, and I can send them to council tomorrow as well. Like I said, we're kind of racing against the clock, but I really wanted to present this tonight rather than at the joint meeting.
And then when we read the report and it looks at the bottom, at the back, and it talks about recommendations and those kinds of things.
So there, in addition to the audited financials, we do get a single audit report, which will have a report on internal controls. And that'll have some recommendations in there. We also have a report on our GAN limit that'll be provided. So that information will also be presented to council.
But I mean, if anything is ever listed there, it's very, very, very minor. You've done such a great job, you and your staff, so thank you.
So was that huge deficit on investment income on that one slide several ago? Was that the trust for the landfill?
Yes. So the landfill trust had losses of close to 300,000 in fiscal year '22.
Okay. Any questions? No? Thank you. All right. Okay. We will proceed to the consent calendar.
Thank you. And just for the record, I want to indicate that Melissa Crosswait from BBK is on my phone. That's the only way she was able to get on. So she is listening. I think it's probably hard for her to hear just on the cell phone, but she is available, and she is on speaker. If anything comes up, she will comment. So just wanted to let council know. So first item for the consent calendar are seeking approval of the minutes from the February 7th, 2023, and February 21st, 2023, regular city council meeting. Warrants, approval, and disbursements for February 13th, 2023, through February 24th, 2023, totaling $1,370,577.57. Item three, findings continue to hold remote teleconference, virtual city council meetings pursuant to Assembly Bill 361. Asking council to reconsider the circumstances of COVID-19 state of emergency proclaimed by the governor and COVID-19's continued impact, and determine that state or local officials have imposed or recommended measures to promote social distancing in connection with COVID-19, and as such, that continuing to utilize the protections of Assembly Bill 361 will protect the health and safety of attendees. Item four, recommended action, adopt a resolution approving the city, approving city execution of the Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement relating to membership in the Gateway Cities Affordable Housing Trust, and authorize the city manager to execute the Gateway Cities Affordable Housing Trust Joint Powers Authority JPA agreement. Item five, adopt a resolution adopting an inventory report of the city's surplus and excess land pursuant to Government Code Section 54230. And just to indicate, that is a mandate, even though we certainly don't have any excess of surplus land. Finally, item six on the consent calendar. We have the Island Express Helicopter Services lease transfer. Island Express has been bought by another helicopter company. So we're asking authority from the city manager to amend and transfer that lease agreement with Island Express Helicopter Services, Inc., for the city-owned property at 300C Pebbley Beach Road to Maverick Express LLC, and authorize the city manager to use his discretionary authority to assess a transfer fee as established in the lease agreement.
Any questions of the items, or anything to be pulled? If not, call for a motion.
Well, I move that we approve items one through six of the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. If no comments, call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember LaBelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Potemponse?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. Item number seven.
Item number seven. We have a Federal Emergency Management Agency Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant. This is a request from council to authorize the city manager or his designee to submit an application for the Federal Emergency Management Agency Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant. I'm not sure if the chief wants to address this in particular, or only if council has questions. Or I'd be happy to answer any questions, but... Chief?
Either one, if you have questions, go ahead and ask, or... No, I chatted with you, and it's well-written here that we're looking at, it's a three-year period. And we could, depending on how things go, we absorb the costs or eliminate the position at some point. So I don't have any questions.
Neither.
Nope.
Is that a fire alarm?
That was good timing.
Well, if there's...
I'll make, I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager or his designee to submit an application for the Federal Emergency Management Agency Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant.
I'll second.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember LaBelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Potemponse?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good? Yes. You're welcome.
Thank you, council.
And before you adjourn the meeting, I just wanted to say it has been an honor and a privilege to work with four amazing women up here on the dais. Just saying, since tomorrow is Women's Day. It's, it's been, like I said, an honor and a privilege. And thank you, Gabby, for all you do for us, too.
Well, I think we need to talk to Mr. Lutejohan, then. I mean, you know, we have a giant pride festival. What about women's?
We actually had Recreation and I and Yessenia had tried to pull one together for this year. And we're not successful in getting the pieces together in time. So we're working on next year already.
Good.
Yes.
That would be lovely.
Yeah.
Okay, and I think I'm supposed to say goodnight to Tony, and Tony wants me to say goodnight to somebody else. I don't know Tony.
Goodnight, John Boy.
I ran into him earlier. Okay, no further business. Meeting is adjourned.